Well, good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Town Council Workshop. Mr. Lee, compliance, the Freedom of Information Act?
Yes, sir, we are.
Thank you very much. Make the vote call, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Harkins?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Ames?
Here.
Mrs. Becker?
Here.
Mr. Lennox?
Here.
Mr. Stanford?
Here.
Mayor McCann?
Here.
All present, sir.
Okay, today we're going to talk about the parks and recreation, as the plan is the first of our series of six workshops. Jennifer, could you open the discussion?
Sure. I've prepared a very brief presentation that I want to share with you.
All right.
I promise it's much shorter than the document that you got in your packet, although that should show you how comprehensive this project has been. Get the right... Okay, can you see?
Not yet.
Jennifer, it's currently a blue screen.
Let me hit the share button again. One more try, and if not, we'll go on with the conversation. Now you got it.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity to continue this conversation today. I always get real excited when I get to join you for a discussion about projects, but especially parks and recreation. You know, it's one of my passions and a passion of the communities, and I'm so excited that you share that. And you know that we've been actively working on planning for our parks and recreation system since you prioritized preparation of a new Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And I alluded to the large packet. I'm sure the 200 pages kind of seemed overwhelming, but I hope really you saw that it's been a very thorough process and very comprehensive. And I'm not going to go through all those details today, but while we've been executing against this plan, it was clear at your recent workshop in January that maybe we needed to regroup, bring you up to speed before we move forward into the next steps. So in today's workshop, what I really want to do is let you know where we are, continue this conversation, and then leave here with some clear directions so we can move forward toward your goal of best-in-class Parks and Recreation facilities. So to give you an overview of where we've been in the process so far, this is the Cliff Notes version. I know that Parks and Recreation has been a priority for our community since way back in 1995 with the adoption of the first Recreation and Open Space Plan. Flash forward to 2018 when you identified the rewrite of the comprehensive plan and preparation of a new Parks and Recreation Master Plan as 2019 priorities. We identified four parts to the process, and there was a diagram in your attachment B in the workshop packet that has a little bit more detail. But essentially, that process started in summer of 2019 with Part 1, and the outcome of that was LOSE Design, or that was Analysis and Report for Parks and Recreation. It included an assessment of our needs, of our maintenance, budget, and staffing review. And that was adopted by Town Council in September of 2020 and includes recommendations designed to increase the level of service across our community over the next 10 years. So moving into Part 2, we took that information and folded it in as the Parks and Recreation Element or our plan, the comprehensive plan that you adopted in October of 2020. So it includes the recommendations that came out of the consultant's report, as well as some town action items and goals, strategies, and tactics. Right now, we're in Part 3. So Part 3 is where we start to bring these projects to life. This fall, fall of 2020, staff engaged the community to help validate the outcome from Part 1 and Part 2 and to get some additional information on prioritization and programming. We hosted an extensive engagement session that included an online survey, two Open Park Day events, and three virtual town halls with over 500 participants. The community's feedback has been crucial along the way toward developing the information that was in your packet and combined with your direction will be foundational to what Parks and Recreation on the island will hold in future. The next step still within Part 3 would be to engage on design services, and that's what we're going to discuss here shortly. Also in your packet was Attachment I, was the prioritized list of recommendations and action items that were collected from our community. Much as you prioritized during the workshop, they prioritized. And I'm not going to go through that, but just know it was just a starting point to see what the community is interested in seeing happen in the near future. Another piece that we asked the community for input on was the programming. Before we start planning any changes to existing parks or new parks, it's important to have a program in place. And when I'm talking about programs from a design and planning standpoint, what I'm talking about is the focused list of amenities and facilities that are being considered for that particular site. For your reference, the draft programs from the community engagement are included as Attachment J in your workshop packet. These programs are just going to guide the initial decision-making process, conceptualizing a site plan and design and budgeting. We polled the community about the key amenities that they want to see over the next few years. We reviewed their input, combined with the consultant's LOSE Design professional recommendation, to develop lists as a starting point for discussion. It takes into account all the analysis that was done in Part 1 to ensure we provide adequate facilities across the park system. But I do want to stress that these are just a starting point to guide the planning. Programs will continue to be refined as we move into more detailed discussions, as we are with you today and continuing with you and the park designers once we have consultants onboard. The initial programs can be discussed in more detail today if you desire, or else we'll regroup later in the process. So there are a few options for consideration that I would like to get your input on today. Further direction from you will allow staff to move forward with a plan and a path to deliver Parks and Recreation planning and implementation based on the outcomes of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. In support of this effort and to guide our discussion today, staff has developed several options for your consideration. At your recent workshop, the conversation started to come together around the Mid-Island area and the recognition that this area is actually a great location for both a new community park, but also realization that a revitalization strategy, redevelopment strategy should be considered for the broader Mid-Island area, including identification of ways to leverage our public investment to spur private reinvestment. All of these options for consideration will involve the use of highly qualified consultants with active project management by staff. One option is to prepare redevelopment strategy for the Mid-Island Initiative area that includes a new community park on the Mid-Island Track. This option would primarily be a land planning project to start. A second option would be to work in two phases, where Phase 1 would focus on the Mid-Island Initiative area, including both a redevelopment strategy and conceptual planning for the new park on the Mid-Island Track, followed closely by Phase 2, which would include the conceptual planning for Chaplain Community Park and Crossings Park, which are also important in terms of delivery of recreation services on the island. The third option would be to prepare redevelopment strategy for the Mid-Island area in conjunction with conceptual planning for the three parks simultaneously, with the Mid-Island Track coming out, the park there coming out as the first one to move into design, development, and construction. So what's next? Today, we want to receive some input from you here at the workshop. Staff will retool the RFQ based on your direction. We will include the disciplines needed in that RFQ to meet your expectations. We anticipate it being out on the street for anywhere from six to eight weeks to solicit good interest from the community at large, the land planning, and when I say "community," in this case, it's the land planning and park design community. We'll review the responses, hold interviews, and then it will be important for us to come back and notify you of the consultant selection, and then schedule a kickoff meeting where we would like you and other stakeholders to be involved. That will lead toward creation of a redevelopment strategy and park concept plans. This is just an incredible opportunity that you have to make a commitment to our Parks and Recreation system and that staff has to join you in this project. You have been and will continue to be a positive force and driving this positive change in our community, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any, but more importantly, to listen to your discussion, get some direction, and any modifications to the path forward so that we can prepare deliverables and a timeline that will meet your expectation moving forward.
Let's ask Jennifer to stay, and let's do it in order. Alex?
Sure. Jennifer, thank you for the options that you put in front of us. I don't really have a whole lot of questions at this point, some of which may not be relevant to what Jennifer is putting in front of us. So, Mr. Mira, I'd hold those for later if I could. I'd only make a comment. I think that we have an incredible opportunity here with a very well put-together plan in front of us so that we can, of course, improve our parks and rec opportunities here on Hilton Head. I'm going to tie back to a couple of the core values here that I think are important as we move forward. Modernization of our economy could show up in our development of parks and programming. There are a lot of programs that would attract additional visitors here to Hilton Head. So I think that's important, and the inclusion piece also is very important to me. So as I mentioned in the work session we had several weeks ago, I think it's important that we have a captain of the ship, so to speak, in terms of our parks and rec moving forward. I'm not just talking about the development of these plans, but I'm talking about eternity, okay? Too often, I think we have relied on the Island Recreation Center to manage that piece for us. They do a wonderful job, but the direction that we're considering and going, I think it's important that we have someone in charge of that. And I'm really speaking to the inclusion piece. There are a lot of private groups that are asking for particular programs in the area in order to manage that properly and make sure that there is equity in the tax dollars that are being spent. I think that we should be in charge of our parks and rec program here at the town of Hilton Head. And the further the economy thought, I think it's just gravely important that we move forward with this long-term land plan in the Mid-Island area. I'm not quite sure of the boundaries that we would suggest. I'd like to hear a little bit more about that, but I think that that is essential for us at this point. That area has been starving for a long time now, and I think that if we were to really put our heads together and figure out what works best there in conjunction with a magnificent park, I think we'd be in a better place. I just remind us that the bridge to the beach, circle to circle, all of those were long-term plans that included redevelopment and also a magnificent park. There was infrastructure and capital that were put into those areas outside of just a great park. So those are my comments, Mr. Mira, and would like to hear more about the boundaries of the proposed area that we would be considering for redevelopment.
Ms. Ames?
Is Bill available? Is Bill going to have something to say?
Oh.
Yes, he is, David. Would you like to follow Bill?
Well, I was going to go in order. I'm interested in what Bill...
Actually, David, I forgot he was here, David, to be honest with you.
That's all right.
Go ahead, David.
I don't feel diminished.
Well, okay.
I'll be glad to speak if you want.
No, it's not that crucial. First of all, I'd like to welcome Mark. Good to have you here. Decided for the opportunities. I'd also like to thank staff. Taylor, I see you're on the call. You've done an incredible job, and I'm glad to see you're still involved. Jennifer and Sean, I know that you've been scratching your heads on this one for quite a while, so I share your enthusiasm, Jennifer. The excitement that comes from new things, the investment of plans and implementing them, and the civic pride that grows out of successful planning. I think that there are three words that come to mind today as we discuss these things: context, context, and context. I think that we have the start of our context in our plan. But after that, I think we have to look at what is our town's strategic plan before we get into area-wide plans, before we get into site planning, before we get into detailed planning. So I'm really thinking that as we deliberate this morning, we ought to always be asking ourselves, "In what context am I making this decision?" And the relevance of that is can we make good recreation and parks decisions without having an understanding strategically where we want to end up as a community in terms of the new economy, in terms of inclusiveness, inclusive, including regionalism, and so on and so forth? So I am cautioning us not to make decisions that are too small a scale before we're confident that we understand in what way those decisions will fit into the larger context. My inclination is that a consultant should be hired that pulls out of us those strategic goals that are embedded in the Our Plan document and translate those into places in the community. Once we have that broader context, then I think a consultant should identify the two or three areas of the community that are most ripe for private sector reinvestment if we were to create a land use plan and a master plan for those areas. And then, thirdly, once that is done, and I'll go back and expand on that, but once that's done, then I think we have the context to make valuable and long-term decisions about one area over another. Now, from my experience, those first two phases, if you will, can be done relatively rapidly at a conceptual level. But I think it's very important for us to understand why we are picking one area over another and the potential of focusing on those different areas in terms of payoff, private sector reinvestment, and community benefits. The public involvement is crucial to this process. But why is it crucial? I think it's crucial because the public has to understand why government officials and staff are making decisions and also to have confidence in the process as it's unfolding. And then also because the community expresses community values that the consultant must hear and must be sensitive to. But I would caution us to believe that we can rely on the public 100% for the ideas that are going to inspire future generations. I would say that good ideas enhance an existing market. Great ideas and innovation create new markets. I think that's what we ought to be thinking about when we discuss the potential of the Mid-Island Track, the Palmetto Bay Corridor, Stony, and so on. It's the great ideas that we should be seeking, and I think that's in the selection of the consultant. I have been told that I shouldn't hearken back to Charles Fraser because he is no longer relevant. I disagree with that, and I learned from my experiences working with him. If we had relied on pure public input, or if he had, back in 1956, we probably would have had another Myrtle Beach subdivision design on Hilton Head. But he had a great idea that absolutely transformed the way people look at beach development, community development, and resort development. And so I am hoping that we, as a community, under Mark's capable leadership, under staff's experience and knowledge, can create the format for the community and a very capable consultant to come up with the great ideas that will transform this community into Hilton Head 3.0, 4.0, whatever. But I think that's the mindset that we need when we're discussing the potential going forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Good morning to all. As I reflect on where we are and how our thoughts are focused or gravitating towards recreation, I think we have an unusual opportunity in this community. We have a tract of land that we know we don't want to populate with housing. We know we don't want to populate it with business. We really want to make it a special place, a place for recreation, a place for reflection, a place for refuge. And this opportunity, if expressed with creativity and with care and with caution, will create an asset, I believe, that will be very welcoming to people of all walks of life in the community, very welcoming to residents as well as tourists, and an asset that can distinguish us in terms of our competitive position, really, throughout the country. And I don't quarrel with comprehensive planning. I think that concept, generally speaking, makes a lot of sense, and it's hard to argue against it logically. The question frequently comes, when opportunity knocks and the timing is right and the opportunity is significant, might that be the opportunity to do something and let planning pivot from what we're creating? I think a microburst of planning focused on the North End with the potential park that we know that's a fixed asset, it's not going to change. The question is, how do we feature it? How do we develop it? How do we share it? If we begin with a tangible asset that can create a lot of celebration in the community and just visualize concentric circles around that location, what might it do for the community? It might encourage outside capital to come in and might encourage people that are there to upgrade. It might encourage a revitalization of the North End. And yes, I think that can be done within the context of the overall community. But I think we ought to create the microscope right now on the North End, create the pivot point with the park, and then go out with an RFP that gets the brightest and the best, not so much in municipal land planning, but get the brightest and the best in terms of park development. And then realize the, I think, very positive implications of having that happen. And when we do that, I think concurrent with that, parks are a key asset in our community. And while we're focusing on this, I don't think we want to lose sight that our existing assets need probably some refresh, probably needs some rehab. So we should always be focused on that in terms of providing adequate service and adequate safety for those that use the other parks. But I think if we don't do anything and start a major massive master plan, we'll be here forever. And the opportunities that before us will pass us by. And I don't think time's our friend here right now. I think capital's starting to loosen up, and if we show direction, revitalization in that area, the private capital will come, and that's what this community needs right now. So I would encourage us to think about that park as a special place. It's a diamond in the rough right now. It could be the rallying point that we're here, we're in business again, we're moving forward. And then, through trade of persuasion and promulgation, let the investment community know what's in the area and start welcoming them in.
Mayor, now I know why you had Bill go after me.
No, no. It's not an absolute, David.
Jimmy?
So there's been a lot of great expressions already, and I just want to add this, that I have every confidence in the folks who are sitting around these tables with me. And I am humbled and proud, but absolutely am certain that between this group that we will come up with those ideas that express what David and others have so eloquently put forth. So I would like to, at this point, just say, let's keep it simple. Let's not overstep our reach at the moment. Let's not overstep, step our reach at the moment and get something done that we can all be proud of and that our, I was gonna say grandchildren, but at this point grandchildren, great grandchildren, all of them, the future generations to come, will appreciate Hilton Head Island as we and those before us have. So, thank you, and let's get started.
Thomas?
I want to echo what, what Tammy said. I think the strength around the table is incredible, and it just got stronger effective Monday with, with Mark joining our team. Welcome, Mark, and I'm really looking forward to, to working with you. Deloitte Consulting put out a white paper pertaining to crisis management for local governments, and they suggest that there are three phases that we've got to work through. The first phase is a response phase where we address the health and social and economic issues, pandemic and crisis. And they say primarily the issue is maintaining service continuity, and I think we've done an outstanding job of doing that. But I also recognize that we are still in the response phase, soon to go to recovery. And they talk about recovery, creating a more resilient society and economy. And I think these three phases pretty much go in tandem with the phasing that, that Jennifer is suggesting we consider for the Parks and Rec Master Plan. But the recovery period, which we're soon to come into, is a period where we create a more resilient society and economy. And I see that happening, and I see Parks and Rec a major element of that. And the third and final phase is a phase called thriving, where we plan that'll lead the recovery. And I think as a result of what we do coming out of the comprehensive plan, I anticipate Hilton Head Island thriving as a result of that. That said, and I, I think we've, we've discussed a lot about the comprehensive plan, and I think we are now at the very beginning of the first critical element in managing the process, and that is trying to prioritize and allocate town resources first and foremost. And I think Jennifer's suggestion of a consultant coming in and taking a look at the, the three parks that she mentioned would be a good start to that process. This is going to be a longer-term process because we're going to have to find sources of funding that probably don't exist right now, and that will take some time. But I think step one in managing the process of implementing the program of work that comes out of the comp plan is prioritization and allocation of resources. Step two is measuring our performance. Step three is assigned accountability. And step four, perhaps the most importantly, is communicating with the community. This is a good start, and I'm anxious to get on with it.
Mr. Glenn?
Thank you. I too want to welcome Mark aboard. We're glad to have you onboard with the team, and we look forward to your leadership. I want to compliment and thank our staff, Jennifer and Taylor and Sean, taking the lead in this. I think the development of, first of all, the visioning, then moving into our plan, and then drawing further public comment through the Open Parks Day gives me and all of us a lot of comfort that we have a pretty good idea where the priorities are from the public point of view. I want to suggest that any citizens who are watching this open up the, to this, the announcement of this program so that you can see the detail that we have been presented with and understand more of what we're dealing with here in moving this forward. In terms of the planning side, I am certainly not trained or experienced as a planner. I have great respect for David Ames' point of view on this because he does have experience and expertise in it. At the same time, I would say that I think we've been doing a lot of study and a lot of soul searching as we have developed our plan. We know what our comp plan is about. We understand the pursuit of excellence. I, I'm in more inclined to look to a focused project, a focused project at Mid Island. That being said, I don't really know whether you start off with getting concepts and then, secondly, get into details. It would seem to me that that would be the logical way to do that, but the options that we've been presented seem to blend those things together a bit. So I would certainly favor the concept of focusing our energies on the Mid Island. And I do that accepting comfort from the fact that the Low Country Celebration Park, which was one of the biggest investments the town has ever made, has stimulated all kinds of investment around it in areas that were on the decline or were certainly declined. And so we have evidence that that can happen in our community, and I believe that it can happen in this North Island area, which is sorely in need of things. If we get into the specifics of the responses that I reviewed in going and preparing for this today, I come away with the view that the public supports the concept of development of Mid Island, but that the primary focus of the public has to do with paths and trails. There wasn't that much associated with active sport. Sure, there was some, but the predominant of the votes came out in favor of paths and nature and leisure trails and the like. So my prejudice in this, and I would state it as a prejudice rather than a fixed point, my prejudice is that this should be developed as a passive park. But as I said, I'm not a planner to start with. And so to me, the right way for us to go is to retain a consultant to come in and develop concepts for this area, that is, the Mid Island Park land, possibly with side comment about how that could impact the related community. And then we would come back with a phase two, where taking those concepts, we have either that or another, come in with detailed plans and specifications for the development of the park. So those are my thoughts. Again, David, great respect for your opinion, but I'm inclined to lean the way Bill has recited. Finally, I would say, Mayor, I'm very interested in your point of view on this. Thank you very much.
Welcome. Oh goodness. Well, thank you for all the welcoming messages this morning. Josh, we off mute here? We are? You know, this is my second day in. I've reviewed the Parks and Rec Master Plan. I hear your, your messages loud and clear. I've been taking notes, I see Josh taking notes here. I really think we just need to get the RFQ out and work on a great consulting team. And I think a great consulting team comes in a lot of different sizes. There are some folks that are great at the redevelopment initiative, at the redevelopment strategies, and then there are companies and teams out there, and we know, we know a lot of them, that, that are more adept to putting an amazing park concept together. So I think the next step really needs to be highlighted by Jennifer, and I really want to thank Jennifer and Sean, and talked with both yesterday. I haven't had a chance to talk with Taylor, but I'm so impressed by the Parks and Rec Master Plan and understand how it really ties into the comprehensive plan. My hard job and, and a little bit of time will be taken to put all of those puzzle pieces together, so to speak. I know that Jennifer has a pretty clear path forward in the sense of releasing the RFQ, scoring it, looking for the right team, and coming back to you all with some concepts based upon the Parks and Rec Master Plan, based upon all of your great comments today. And we're gonna get started as soon as we end this meeting.
Thank you. Answer your question, Glenn. This is probably the most exciting thing we're gonna do in our four years that the majority of us are here. It's also the most important thing that we're gonna do in the four years that we're here. The middle of our island is dying. People coming in here, tourists who are looking to buy homes, and they see four major corners of the island in decay. A lot of them don't look too much further than that along the way. I also believe in David's concept that we should be thorough in what we're doing and take our time, but I don't think time's our friend here. I think the sooner we get started on this, the better we really are. Nothing is gonna be perfect. We're gonna learn an awful lot from our first park, we really are. Second and third park will be much better than the first one, but we have the ability and talent to do that. I would like to do this every month, the same group that we have here now to see where we are. We can't let anything slip. If we talk every month or sooner if we need to, we'll be a hell of a lot better off. The RFQ is the most important thing to get out there, but we have the tools to do it, and we should really do it. It's a big thing for the town. Mark, Alex, you were saving a question for later.
Yeah, I just need some clarity before I can make a decision on which option, you know, I would deem best. I guess the, the, the first one, fundamentally, where are we with the taking over of ownership of all the parks? Are we still aggressively going after that? I know there are parks on Hilton Head that we do not own.
Yeah, but this first one we're talking about, we own everything, and the only question is the PUD, poor world thinks they have a say in some stuff because part of the land is part of their PUD.
Yeah, I understand that, but, but again, with, with the, with the options that are put before us, I just need to get a better understanding if we are going in that direction. That's just yes or no. I don't know, maybe Josh can help me with that question?
I don't think that direction, Alex, is gonna move along until the court case is finished.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough. And this question would be for, I guess, Jennifer. I was not quite clear going through the plan. The Patterson Park and the Taylor Park, are those currently funded?
The Taylor Park is not currently funded. The Patterson Park has a little bit of funding associated with it from CDBG funds. A few years ago, town council allocated the bulk of the funding that year to the picnic pavilion at the Boys and Girls Club, with the balance going to Patterson Park. So it really does need a little bit more infusion to make it a reality. So you'll hear that in upcoming conversations starting tomorrow with the PC Planning Commission, CIP Committee, and then coming forward to Community Services and Public Safety Committee later in March, talking about how we move Patterson forward sooner. But Taylor does not have any funding at this time.
Jennifer, could you explain where those parks are?
Yes, sir. The Taylor property is on Wild Horse Road near the intersection with Gumtree. It's a property that we had a life estate on for a long time, and now it is available for us to develop. It was intended as a mini park or a neighborhood park, if you will, so maybe a picnic shelter, restroom, parking spaces, playground, something that you would walk your kids or grandkids to. The Patterson Park is on Marshland Road. It's on the Broad Creek side, so there's an exciting opportunity to provide some water access, probably not in terms of getting into the water, but just viewing it, being able to put a shelter down near the water. It's close to the Habitat project, so there's also a lot of people in that area that would walk to that park.
Thank you.
Okay, and thank you, thank you, Jennifer. And the reason for me asking that question, because I think it's in context, Councilman Ames mentioned context, right? You know, both of those parks were in ownership by the town, you know, decades before the Mid Island Track, okay? So I, I just think it's important that that is before us as a council, not that it should affect our decision today, but I think from a funding standpoint, from a resource standpoint, that is context of the conversation, right? Those, those two areas have been long awaiting something to happen. I think it's well deserved that we, we put that into our conversation, okay?
And Alex, Josh is gonna look at some funding that's coming up slowly, to see what we can do.
Okay, thank you. And my last one, the Chaplain, the Chaplain area, because one of the options does include us taking a look at, at the Chaplain area. And I know we just approved some funding to start some improvements in that area. I guess my, my question is, as we've done the community outreach and we've had this first, first consultant give us some ideas, has the, the safety in that area come up as a priority versus the park amenities in Chaplain? Where I'm going with that, when Chaplain Park was first built, you know, it started to attract, you know, families for soccer programs and that sort of thing. So there are times of year, and Councilwoman Becca can attest to this, there are times of year where, you know, the traffic in that area is, is, is really heavy, okay? And you, you throw on top of that that the Chaplain area is a speedway more than anything else, with no, no landscape in the medians, you know, it's very inviting to, to rush through that area. I'm just curious to know the emphasis on the safety in that area, what type of infrastructure is being planned if we ought to choose that option versus just the amenities and the programming that go into the park?
Good question, Alex.
So in this, in this part of the project, the discussion has been about the amenities in the park, specifically. Earlier, many, many years ago, when we started Chaplain Linear Park, safety was a consideration because, as you know, the intent of the Chaplain Linear Park is to bridge, not literal bridge, but by pedestrians be able to go from the Broad Creek to the Atlantic Ocean, experience all the ecosystems through there. And there was a concern about keeping people safely from one side of 278 to the other. As part of that project, we are getting ready to push restart on that one, that project too, now that Low Country Celebration Park is complete, and we still have some TIF funding. That's the last TIF project on the books. So I'm sure our conversation will include, when we get that one restarted, the conversation will include the safety, but that was not specific in what I've been sharing with you today. It was specific to the elements that the community would like to see within Chaplain Community Park proper.
Yeah, well, to, to give me comfort and, and confidence in moving forward with the option that we include Chaplain and, and crossings, I would, I would like to see safety first. And I think we need to move further than the Singleton Beach Crossing. We need to expand all the way down to Matthews Drive, because at this point, there's only one, well, two crossings in that stretch that is Follyfield Road and Singleton Beach Road. I just have grave concerns about us upgrading without putting in the proper safety infrastructure in that area.
And I think we could rekindle the conversations we've had in the past. You mentioned the Landscape Median. That was a conversation many, many moons ago, and there was some concern about what that does in terms of free access from your property onto 278. It would result in several, you know, ride out and have to go down a U-turn, but that is something that does traditionally slow traffic, is having that planted median. So that is usually a safety component as well. So we could re, reengage on that at the time that the county manager and council believe that's appropriate.
So I'm just gonna jump in on that because that, in fact, is something, the Landscape Median that I've spoken about many times over the last few years.
median that I've spoken about many times over the last few years. So the calming nature of that landscaping would do wonders to help the speed and the attention given to driving from the Follyfield to the Shelter Cove area that exists elsewhere on the island. So I don't think that's necessarily part of this discussion, but I do believe that that landscape median traffic calming measure is something that should be explored and put into place in the appropriate committee meeting and with support from council, obviously. Thank you.
My final point on that, Mr. Man and Mr. Orlando, is that there is TIF funding that we need to spend, and I want to make sure that we spend it appropriately, okay? That was, that's my point in bringing up the safety issue in that area.
Thank you, Alex. Anything else for the staff? Mark, David?
Yeah, I have a question for Jennifer. Jennifer, in Options One and Two, you refer to a consultant. Mark mentioned the different capabilities, sometimes redevelopment strategies in wheelhouse of one consultant, Parks' implementation plans in another. Is it a decision at this point that it would be a consultant, or are we considering the possibility that even in Options One and Two, there might be two?
I think the option that it could be multiple consultants or a team full of experts. A lot of times these days on projects this intricate, it's not a single consultant, but rather a team of experts. And I think based on the level of quality, best in class, excellence, all of those things, we need somebody with a strong focus on Parks and Recreation, a proven track record in that. But I believe their consultant team can be rounded out with some other specialties, including someone that can look at those concentric circles and figure out, you know, what goes on beyond the impact to the park.
And also, within those statements, it says focusing on the Mid Island Initiative area. Can you define what is the Mid Island Initiative area for me, please?
Well, I think that's something that we would want to define with council's input. We, staff is looking at it. We do have some plans that include the Opportunity Zone and extend up to the Greater North Ridge Track that include Port Royal Plaza, the Mid Island Track, and, you know, that larger area. But I think we'd want to be as specific as you all can, you know, give us input on.
Okay.
The point there, the point in calling it the Initiative Area is the acknowledgement that the park can have and should have a benefit on the entire community, but especially on that surrounding area. It just depends on how big its impact goes.
The third comment I'd like to make is that in Option Two, it does mention Chaplain Community Park and Crossings Park. And consistent with what I started off saying, I think it's important for us to understand the potential of all three of our major parks at the same time that we're making decisions on perhaps the Mid Island Track. I'd also like to call attention to the concept of the Greenway system, which would be connecting parks. I think that is an extraordinarily important concept for us to be integrating into this planning effort. So my thought is that we consider having, insisting on the expertise of a redevelopment type of consultant within the consultant package, that the Initiative Area be defined broadly enough so that it incorporates the redevelopment planning of the quadrants at 278 and Matthews Drive, and may also include portions of the Opportunity Zone and the Ashmore Track. And then thirdly, that Chaplain and Crossings be a part of the RFQ. Thank you.
Well, I have a few comments, but I think Jennifer knocked it out of the park with a lot of her comments. I really think that as we put a multidisciplinary team together, and that includes all the many layers of the redevelopment and planning process, and that's true community planners, it's landscape architects, it's transportation planners and engineers, it's really looking at, and to Councilman Brown's points and everyone's points, we have to look at the roads as we're looking at the park. We can't just look at the park itself or the road itself. So all of those facets will be part of the multidisciplinary team. They will help us refine what the redevelopment area scope looks like. It's one thing for us to sit here and guesstimate today, then it goes as far as North Ridge and, you know, wherever, north, south, east and west. Let's really study how far that intersection is impacted by our Mid Island Tracked Park, but also impacted by the real estate surrounding it. I think that it's going to jump out at us as we start looking at a real real estate assessment in terms of tax base, quality of the built-in, existing built environment and those opportunities. As we get around the table and work on that plan, it will jump out on us and how far we should be looking outward from the Mid Island Track, for lack of a better name. So that's my thoughts. Chaplain needs work. A lot of these parks need work. I've been taking a lot of time over the last little while, driving and looking, and there's so much opportunity in them, and I'm excited to get started. We just need the right team at the table, helping us with some ideas and some thoughts and some wins that are in other places that we would love to make our own, because I know we have the best team at the table in-house. We just simply need to take a few minutes, put the scope together on the RFQ and get to work.
I respect your comments. Thank you, Mark.
Glenn, you have a question? Glenn?
Sorry, I was trying to get back on the microphone. I really didn't have a question. I think what Mark just said makes a whole lot of sense. We need to get moving, and we need to be looking at a multidisciplinary team, which will help us make the decision so that we don't have to make the decision without the full knowledge of what the options may be. Thank you.
Well, okay, this time, next one, put it out in the meeting, okay? I collect a motion to adjutant meeting. So, second, Paul and David, he's raised his right hand. Thank you very much, guys. Talk to you soon. Thank you.